At this time, we will call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Anson.
Here.
Trustee Doral.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
Trustee Waschleger.
Here.
Trustee Lutke.
Here.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
President and Allison.
Here. If you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Trustee Anson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have public comments for anybody that would like to comment on items that are not on the agenda. Items that are on the agenda, you can comment on when those items come up if you'd like We will move on to our first item on the agenda since there is no one here to speak at public comments. Our first item is a consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes of the July 22, 2019, and special village board minutes of July 22, 2019, and July 23, 2019, and August 5, 2019. So that is regular village board minutes and special village board meeting minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes for the meetings that were held on those days, July 22, 23, and August 5.
The minutes on Monday, July 22, I had an amendment I gave already to Darlene to add some comments in that were said and lucked out with the notes. Just got them right here.
Okay. Were they in the agenda?
I wanted the request of my comments regarding the personal observation of the Nixon Park tennis courts to be added to the record.
I'm guessing that change will be made. So that change will be included in the motion. The motion was made for the minutes. I'm guessing that it's okay with everybody that those changes be made? All right. All in favor of approving the minutes with those changes being made?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is the motion to approve the vouchers for payments. That is in the amount of $662,033.31.
I make a motion to approve the voucher list in the amount of $662,033.31.
I second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Upstayed.
That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of actions related to licenses and permits. We have a bartender's license that expires, this would be to expire June 30, 2020. This is for Joseph Bouzek.
I make a motion to approve the bartender's license for Joseph Bouzek.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve that license. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. We also have an application for a street use permit. This is for Stacy Laflamme. The event is River Reserve Block Party. The location is 100 block of Long Meadow Drive. The date is Saturday, September 21, and the time is 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
I make a motion to approve the street use permit.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve that street use permit.
Quick question. Is that just for the street use or if they have music or something, do they have to have another permit? Just now?
It's just for the street use.
Okay. But if they do have a band or someone playing, do they have to?
It's my understanding they're not having.
Okay.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item on our agenda is a first reading of a bill for an ordinance 812-2019, an ordinance to amend Chapter 2 pertaining to regular meetings.
Sounds like a lot of people wanted to keep it at 7:00, so do we want to just keep it at 7:00?
I'm fine. I just couldn't do 6:00, so.
I like 6:30. 6:30 is fine with me. I can do 7:00.
Obviously, again, this is just the first reading, so we can keep on going with it. But as we make the readings going forward, then that would put it at 6:30. All right. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to grant the ability to Kiwanis to proceed with river cleanup projects in the Centennial Park to Hartbrook Park segments through 2020 in coordination with the Department of Public Works.
Jim Inzberger and Chip Schneeberger with the Kiwanis. We are looking to continue some of the improvements that we've made along the riverbank in that segment that's described, and we are looking to move forward with some more work along that area. We're looking at a date of August 24 for a small version of what had happened in the past, and then October 19 would be another bigger event that would be similar to the one we had last spring. The first event, we would be looking at probably having staff do the regular cleanup that they oftentimes do, like say, on a Monday on regular hour time to clean up the debris or tree waste and then the brush. And then on the October session, we would want to do similarly what we had done in the fall, or in the spring, pardon me, where we had a staffer there on overtime and they were running the village's chipper. We feel that when there's a larger crowd, it is more expedient to do it in that fashion because otherwise debris can be piled a little bit more haphazardly. They can, I think, tend to handle that a little bit better. And staff seem to be in agreement with that as well. And then going forward, we thought, well, rather than coming to the board on a regular basis, we do plan on trying to do some of these in the next year as well, and so we would do it on the same fashion. We would bring it to the administrator's attention as well as the DPW's attention so that things are coordinated when they have time, et cetera, to fit it into their schedule and their budget. Does that seem correct, Ryan?
Yeah. We took a walk through with them and just they plan on, I mean, it'll probably be the next couple of years, but we thought have this village board approve it through 2020. They could talk to DPW to see what availability is, make sure they have people for those weekends, and then probably twice a year, I think, it would be the big event where they would have.
There might be, occasionally, there are other groups, say, through the Ice Age Trail, where they might have 10 or so people. Maybe they may even have certain businesses that want to do a team bonding kind of thing, and let's do a little work project. And so it might be, hey, we can call the staff and say, they're going to do this little segment, and there might be a couple piles of brush for you on Monday, or whatever.
DPW to coordinate that, or are they the Kiwanis coordinating?
We would be a liaison to be worked through.
And what was the October date that you were talking about?
It was the 19th.
Okay. When you were talking about the August 24, and you said just have staff, are you meaning the DPW staff on a Saturday?
No. So that would mean that they would be available to take away the waste at their discretion the following week, depending on when it works into their schedule.
Oh, the smaller one. You just said have staff do, and I didn't know who you meant by staff.
Yeah, they would have Public Works come, just not on overtime.
Yeah.
The larger event where there are a lot of people there pushing a lot of wood, we'd like to have somebody on staff for liability reasons.
Okay, but we're not actually having DPW go in to actually clean it out and do the work then? Okay.
No. So far, I mean, just over these last few sessions, we've probably had about 700 volunteer hours that have gone into cleaning that park up, so I think it's very beneficial for the community.
It's a great idea. Look at the work that they did going down there, just unbelievable. A lot of volunteer work, and I think it's a big asset that our community has, and I think we need to support it. But they're asking for minimal stuff and some of our equipment that we have all the time, so I think it's a great idea. Thank you for the.
And I think if it goes beyond the scope of what we're talking about, then we might have to come back and ask for something else.
No, I think it's great, guys.
The only thing I'd ask, which I like this and I love the idea of just approving it through 2020, but when you have dates set, just let us know, because like you said, you might have other company employees that want to do that that were aware of it.
Usually, it's Ryan and Mike and Dave Felkner that get copied on anything we're sending out, so we try to keep it.
We're always looking for more volunteers.
In case we want to help out or something.
Absolutely.
Yep. You do a great job of letting us know.
I just need to know the dates that show up, though.
I know.
One thing that I think would be, and it is dud, as you're hearing from the board, but I'd like to see something for a couple of reasons that at least does not, something, whether it be an email, but something that's stating when a date is coming at least a few weeks ahead of time, number one, just for us to be transparent. But number two, let's say someone calls and says, I need that chipper because Kiwanis gets to use it for free, not realizing what's actually happening. By doing that, then we always have a record of, even though we have the open record here, that way we're always tracking it, in a sense. If anybody were to come to the village and say, we want to know this, that, or the other, we can, we have a record of it. It's happening. It's obviously a very good thing. I'm just saying that way it's a little bit more.
Can that just be done in an email fashion through the administrator?
I would be completely content with that.
Are you thinking you're going to get all the way to Hartbrook Drive by the end of this year? I had heard that one point, and I just was wondering how you were going to.
There's a lot of complexities when we get to the portion that borders property owners, and some of those complexities are in clearance for some of the vehicles to remove the waste as well as some other factors. And so I think we're, if you want to call it, we're going to go for the long-hanging fruit first and work from both ends where it's on village property. And then we'll, I think, in our meeting, we talked about trying to get some strategies to get to the center portion of that area. So this could go on for years. There's enough stuff that is going on there, and then when you're finished, then another one falls in the river where you just had been. But if we don't do it at all, it's never going to get done, so we're just trying to chip away at it.
It's been, it's been very safe so far. Do the volunteers have to sign any type of form, letting them know that they're at their own risk? I mean, it hasn't blown up huge. I'm just saying when we're doing this, it's just something I'm thinking of.
So the people that work through the Ice Age Trail Association, they have coverage that they have if they're signed up to do projects through them. We kind of have put it under the Kiwanis umbrella because technically, anybody that's helping us with a project is kind of covered under our umbrella. And so anything that would go beyond that wouldn't.
Okay.
And so that's why we're trying to be kind of the spearheaders of that. We thought that was a good way to run.
It's a great thing. I'm just trying to make sure we do it.
I think it's nice for you to have your bases covered, Dan.
Yeah. Well, and hopefully it won't matter. No one will get hurt. No one has yet, and there's been a couple cleanups, so. They won't be. It'll be safe. They were very safe last time, and they had a lot of people there and a lot of stuff, so just trying to make sure we got all our bases covered, as stated. So this will be through 2020, so that's through December 31, 2020.
I'll make a motion to grant the ability of the Kiwanis Club to proceed with the river cleanup projects in Centennial Park and Hartbrook Park through 2020 in coordination with the Hartland and DPW.
It's been moved and seconded to allow this cleanup to continue in different phases through 2020 with coordination with village staff.
Sorry, I didn't get to say something that I wanted to before it was made, before we finished. Can we just make sure that it's known that it's going to be two big cleanups per year? Because you already did one, you'll do the second where DPW is going to be there, and it's time and a half. I don't want to have multiple larger cleanups where they're there, so just so we're clear that it would be.
I think that's even ambitious, because you've got to get volunteers to commit to more than two, I think would be difficult anyway, so I doubt if we would even try that.
But I saw a plan for it, but that's what we're saying, because they're still talking money for the taxpayers. Okay.
So you have that?
Yep.
You have that, the one big cleanup in the year. But it has been moved, it's been seconded. Any other discussion? And does the board require an amended motion, or are you just going to make that part of the motion?
It can be part of it, because it says in coordination.
Okay. I'm just making sure everybody's comfortable with it. All right. So with that being said, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
You're welcome.
Now, we have a consideration of a motion to increase the annual facade matching grant for 2019 as requested. This is coming from the Business Improvement District.
You still got me up here. All right. I think in your packets, you guys all received the letter and the request from the Business Improvement District. There was a spreadsheet that kind of outlined some of the detail, but the overall scenario is that we do share the grant program with the bid and the village, each contributing $20,000 to a $40,000 annual budget. The last couple of years are in the summary box on the bottom of your information. Of the last four years, with a total of $80,000, that was at least budgeted on the village's standpoint, another 80 on the bid's standpoint, $51,000 and some change was utilized in that program. And so we have never really gone to the max for quite some time over the last four years. So if you guys carry a reserve account, I don't know if you do, there would have been about $28,000 that would have been in reserve from those programs. This year, it was nice that we have some of our community members, our business community members, who actually want to make some improvements on their property, that we have, it's going to exceed that grant amount of $40,000 if we allow it. And so from the standpoint of the village, we are requesting the 690817 to be an overage, and that also would be something that would be an overage in the bid's coffers as well. We plan on taking that out of our reserve fund, and if this passes this board today, we'll be handling that at our meeting tomorrow. But we are already prepared to do that. Any questions that you might have about any of the specifics?
So the 6900, that's just money that if it's not approved, you're waiting for the approval to.
Then we would have to.
Grant others, I mean, put the question.
Right. Then we would say, no, you might have to have your project wait till next year. So we never know what's coming up, but like we said, these funds haven't been used to their full amounts in the past, and so we thought, at least on our end, that why keep these people from making improvements? In the history of the program, we are probably, when we've got this $40,000 available, anytime we give out grants, the actual project cost is probably four to five times that. So you're getting that much extra valuation or either improvement or maintenance of people's properties, which keeps their values high, which is beneficial for everybody in the community. And so that's why we encourage this program. In fact, this was probably one of our initial cornerstone programs when the bid was formulated. And so we're happy that it's being used to this extent.
So as shown on the form, what your, the amount is $6,908.17.
Right.
In village funds, then obviously the bid would be putting up the other.
The same amount. And then, at this date, we would then, I imagine, say we're closing all other applicants for this year.
Right. Because it's maxed out.
Because it is maxed out. This would be the max of the max.
And what about moving forward for, say, the same thing happens next year, will you come back again and ask for additional money?
I mean, I think we would have to if we would have that many people coming forward and wanting to do some things. It doesn't seem like there's anything in real absolute need at this point, but people want to do some things, make improvements, and I think it's made us a more vibrant community, and we're competitive with our other neighboring communities because of it.
One thing that happened this year that I do know of, I'm not sure if more people just heard about it or what happened. I know there was a lot of shuffling going on with, like, one business moved from near Beer Snobs over to another one. I don't know if that even came into play, because I'm not even seeing them on here. There were just, I don't know if a lot of people heard about it or what happened, but it definitely was an uptick from the previous years.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual facade match for 2019 in the amount of $6,908.17.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to, is that what you meant, just to clear with you guys?
Yeah. Additional funds. Love and beyond.
An additional $6,908.17, which is an overage of the budgeted amount. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll get out of here now.
The next item we have is a discussion and consideration of a conceptual plan for an addition to Sendix.
Just quick background, they are here, just so this is before the Plan Commission. The next step would be to go to the Plan Commission next month.
So what they're requesting is to give us a brief overview of what they're doing, and they're looking for the board to say either, hey, we aren't going to let you do this anyways, or send them to the Plan Commission. Just wanted everybody to be aware.
My name is Ryan Thomas. I'm an architect at Madison Maher Architects, and I'm the architect for Sendix on this project.
My name is Mark Birmingham, and I'm with Sendix Food Markets.
And the description of this project would be the addition of like 27 feet by the length of the building to the north side of the building. And this would allow for higher efficiency for shipping and receiving and some of the storage needs that they have inside the building. And it would allow for about 20 feet of the back of the building to become part of the store now instead of storage and warehousing. So it would allow them to expand their programs inside and really take advantage of the popularity of the store and the location. There is some stormwater in that area, and there are some easements that we're working through with the municipality and with We Energies. And the timing of this actually works out well. Municipality is planning on redoing some of the stormwater in the road that's directly to the north of this property, and we would be allowed to go into the road with some of that stormwater management and provide some needed storm catch basins to slow down some of the water that's moving down the street and not into the storm sewer. So it's actually good timing to provide some relief for the water that's moving towards the park.
The extension on the north side, is that going to close that alley off totally?
So there's access on both sides. This would close down the alley. Pretty much the asphalt that's there currently is about 27 feet, so it goes right to the current asphalt. The current landscaping was put in a while ago based on the size of the trees, and we're going to be working to keep all those in place throughout the project. I believe we're providing a landscape plan that addresses three things, basically cleaning up anything that's deteriorated from the original plan, number one. Number two, have a plan to replace anything that dies during construction. And number three, if it all would die, what's the master plan for putting it all back together again? And make sure that's all approved sort of in three phases, so we know what to expect there.
Another entrance in the back, if you're going to block off the one end, in the same one-way alley.
So there's two entrances to the back of the property, but they're not connected right now. But the one that will service the back will just be the one we're not planning on, because of existing, there's another transformer in that location off of the west corner of the building, so we weren't planning on putting any more truck access. The loading docks are currently on both sides of this building, and that's due to the inefficiency of the plan because of the depth of the original store. This new plan would only be using the loading dock for trucks that's existing on the east side of the property, so the west side loading dock and big truck access would change. It would go away. There's a dumpster enclosure that we put on that side, and there's some existing dumpsters for the other tenants that would get serviced, but.
So the other tenants and the rest of the building will still have access to the back of theirs through?
There's one more driveway to the, there's a driveway basically on both sides of the building. One of them goes directly out to the street between Sendix and the Walgreens, and then the other one services pretty much all the tenants.
And if you take this all the way to the curb area or where the trees are, are you still within the guidelines for right-of-way and the easements?
So there's easement for power and utility that we're working through. As far as the property line, we're within a foot, the two feet of the property line there. So there's, all where the trees are are not on our property. When this was originally designed, they put the asphalt right to the property about, and they paid for all the trees in the right-of-way, but that's not on the property. So that's what I can tell you about that, so.
I guess going back to my concern. If somebody along one of those other, like a vet and maybe the dental supplier or someplace, I'm not sure where the driveways are, but if a semi comes in, they'd have to back up all the way to the end, maybe a couple hundred feet. have to back up all the way to the end, maybe a couple hundred feet. They'd unload and then pull out because there's no, they can't really go forward.
Correct. Yeah, they pull in and I believe there's a jog in the, they can pull in and drive through when they back up.
You know, it's a big circle. And now otherwise I have to back in from, I don't know if the other entrances are big enough for those trucks to back in all the way down there and then come back out the same way. It would block up anybody else from using it then, right?
There's garbage and there's different sized box trucks. I believe that they would both come in to the west side of the property and then they would back in. I don't think they're backing in off the street just because of the jog of the building.
They wouldn't be blocking off any other deliveries for any other of the vendors there?
No, no, there's like 60, there's 60 feet in some areas and 30 feet in other areas. There's a lot of room back there.
One question. Chief, you see any problems with getting the fire truck back there or, because I'm looking at the plans and I don't either.
They've done such a wonderful job with updating the building in the sprinkler system when Sendix purchased it. And we're very fortunate with Sunny Slope to offer the third side there because that is a nice wide road for us. And with our increased equipment, we have much better capabilities now to protect that building.
Are we, do we need a motion to, have we move ahead to send these to the, I make a motion that we send the plant?
Send them to the Plan Commission as is.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to send this plan to the Plan Commission for its consideration and review. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And thank you to Sendix too for doing a wonderful job with what you've done so far there. It's helped the community quite a bit.
We love being here. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve an agreement with the Flanagan Dorn Post 294, American Legion for the Use of the Nixon Park Canteen. Anybody here?
I make a motion that we let the, approve the VFW or the, sorry, Dorn Post 294, American Legion for the Nixon Park Canteen.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to allow the VFW to, I'm sorry, the American Legion post to use the canteen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. My apologies to the VFW or to the American Legion for saying VFW, which I do believe they have some members of the VFW that fall under there at that post. We commend all of the people who have served and been lost. It's a great organization. Now we have a consideration of a motion to accept change order number two, which is the final for the 2018 paving program. Lean on the administrator to describe.
Lean on Mike G. to come up here and describe. Pretty much the 2018 paving contract is done. All we are doing is paying the amount that was retained for a one-year warranty.
Yeah, that is correct. We've inspected the work and myself, Ryan Atman and Dave Faulkner have discussed it. And we believe that the contract is complete and that we can release the retainage.
I make a motion to release the fees we have on hand to pay the paving contract.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to release the funds being held for the paving contract. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried.
I just want to make sure I understand, but this is a change order, right?
That's how they say it.
Okay.
Truly all it is.
Can we just get, yeah, clarify that for the public?
Yeah, I mean, it, they.
There's no dollar amount of change. It's just releasing the money.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you.
It's their terminology. All we're doing, we kept money and we're paying it.
Did we get, we didn't get a motion to do it?
Yeah, we had a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. We have, I've gotten a few, I've talked to some people and I've gotten a few calls on it. Most likely on the next agenda or maybe a month from now, I'll be asking for it to be put on the agenda to look into the Bottersbach's box area at Nixon Park. There is a, a problem that not only people playing on it have, have come to notice, but also some people from the DPW have even mentioned that something just isn't right. There's some plastic coming up or something. I want to probably get it on agenda sooner rather than later because we probably will be having either DPW or our administrator call and look at the contract to find out how long that workmanship is covered. I mean, or if something wasn't done right, it should be corrected. And if we, if it was all done right, it sounds like we still are in a situation where we possibly have to fix it. So I'd just like to let the board, the board.
Especially before we close the gates.
I don't have anything else at this time.
I make a motion, oh, hold up.
Chief?
I was surprised you weren't hearing from me about.
It wouldn't be the same if I didn't have something to say, but just wanted to say the movie night at the Firehouse and the Heartland National Night Out was just phenomenal. We had Mary Poppins showing and it was just a great, great evening, great atmosphere. Again, it was really cool to see all the kids watching the movie and, and in attendance. So kudos to the Chamber and the group that, and all the stores downtown and everybody that was involved in the National Night Out in Heartland. It was great. I even understand that the ice cream that the police department served was phenomenal. So I missed out, I missed out on that.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Chief. If I could use you for a second, I'm actually, and this is kind of, I think that the Fire Department and the Police Department would agree with this. If you could face the camera and the reason I'm saying this, if you see the small tag, the name tag that is on chief, it's my understanding that all of those have been produced and made. They have pictures on them and the people's names that state that they work for the Village of Heartland. It's not something we had in the past. So if you are ever concerned, number, obviously you can call the village to ask if it's actually an employee. But if you're ever concerned on whether if someone approaches you and says they're from the Water Department or something like that, or from DPW, they should have a badge on them. If they don't, contact, you know, contact the village and make sure that it's an employee. But for safety's sake, we're just trying to take measures to make sure all the citizens are safe. Thank you. I just happened to notice.
Well, thanks for the close up, you know, that'll just add to my statement that everybody always tells me that I have a face for radio.
You got a spear in a fire, Chief.
Piggybacking on Chief Dean, the ice cream social did go very well. As of first year, we partnered with the library, had some police equipment out here in the parking lot and it was very successful. Had a pretty good turnout throughout the night. But one other thing I want to bring to your attention, I'm actually going to add it into our info pack that goes out this week. But we do, our suburban critical incident team has drafted some donation letters. So anyone that is interested, if you follow our Facebook, you may have seen those go out. But please share those with anyone. I will be making contact with several civic groups throughout the area as well and see what we could come up with.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chiefs.
Now can I make a motion to adjourn?
You can make that motion anytime you want. I have no control over it. It's been moved and, you know, that's the strongest motion you can make. It's been moved and seconded that this meeting be adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.